Good evening, if we can stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a couple of donations that we would like to recognize. The first one is from Global Partners LP. Through their partnership with ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Program, they donated $500 to Massey High School to be allocated for math and science. Massey was nominated by ExxonMobil Station on 25 Monroe. This has been an annual donation for the past few years.
Yep, and I think what we've done every year is Jim Stossel and Kevin Welch have shared the wealth, and I think this year it's Jim's turn, so we'll be buying some lab equipment for our science courses with it.
Great. Staples and Shelton, excuse me, donated elementary school supplies collected through a school supply drive they held. Supplies were distributed to all three elementary schools. And then finally, the Monroe Rotary Club donated 2,000 child dinosaur-designed face masks to be used for our elementary school students. So on behalf of the board, we thank you very much to those three organizations for their very generous donations to Monroe Public Schools.
Absolutely.
We will move on to our consent agenda, and we have a number of warrants because we did not have a meeting last time. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Nick, as a second. Before we go any further, Shannon can be here this evening. Alan, could you be the secretary if it's a nice meeting?
Sure.
Thank you. I don't want to go past that. Does anybody have any discussion on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons, and up first is our Massey Student Board reps. So come on down, girls.
All right, ooh, sorry. Good evening. So I'll start off with our sports news. So Massey Boys Hockey, they lost 3-2 to Danbury. Our Massey Boys Swimming Team, they won 99-74 over New Milford. Boys Basketball won 73-51 over Pomperog. And Girls Basketball won 39-33 over Immaculate. And then I'll talk a little bit about Robotics. So Massey Robotics is continuing to meet safely, which I'm really excited about. And over the weekend, 4478D, my team, we took on the tournament champions, and can't wait to see what the rest of the season has for us. And then Massey integrated a new schedule for the coming weeks, and it was a smooth transition today. And next up, Mel.
Thank you.
The prom fashion show will be held virtually this year. The exact date is undecided, but a survey has been posted on the Massey Class of 2020 Instagram. Regarding the show, make sure to look out for more updates on the Instagram. And additionally, progress reports will be released this Friday through school email. And now, Suja.
Our virtual winter concert videos will be released soon, so be sure to look out for the links in the upcoming weeks. The winter drama video will also be released soon. We're all very proud of how hard our music and theater departments are working with the limitations, so we'll be looking forward to these virtual performances. Thank you.
Thank you, girls. All right, we will move on to other committee reports. Does anybody have any other committee? David?
Hi, Donna. The Safety Committee met on 1/21, led by Jack. Joe was on as well. The schools have been doing a very good job in trying to get modified drills done as best as possible under the circumstances. And everyone's looking forward to district staff being eligible for the 1B group vaccines. That was all I have to report on the Safety Committee. And then later on, 1/21, Nick and I, Joe, were at the Pension Committee meeting. The fund is doing very well, to my recollection. We were 90% to 93% funded on the board side. There was one transfer, but otherwise it's doing well, so nothing else to report.
Great, thank you. Nick?
I attended the Board Finance meeting at the liaison from our boards to the Board of Finance, and there was, I spoke during public presentation on behalf of myself and our chair about perhaps the board entertaining a joint meeting between the two boards when the budget, our budget goes to the Board of Finance. And the discussion was that that won't be happening, and that the board chair and superintendent can represent the board at the budget workshop. I, of course, disagree with that, but that is the decision that has been made, and so that is what we will go with.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have committee reports? Jeff?
February 3rd, curriculum complement. Two of the items that we brought on today's agenda. The new course proposal on health, like I said, is in the agenda. And then AP Stats Textbook, which interestingly, Nick knows a little bit about, gets a review, it's pretty cool. And then third, continuing work on the vision of the graduate.
Good, thank you. Anybody else? All right, we will move on to public participation. I will start here if anybody wishes to speak. Okay, Paul, is there anybody on the phone?
No.
There is nobody on the phone, we will move forward then. Up next is the report of the superintendent, and I don't know, are you having Mike and Steve come up for item A or no?
Yes, yeah, Mike and Steve are going to come on up, talk a little bit about item A. I don't have anything behind me, but I want to thank, first, I want to, come on up guys. I want to thank Steve and Mike. You know, I text both Steve and Mike with, you know, trying to come up with viable plans to provide more in-person instruction for our students at both Massey and Jackie Hollow. I know they presented about a month ago or so, and, you know, did some surveys, got a lot of feedback from staff, from parents, kind of went back to the drawing board and came up with some other plans. So, you know, basically, you know, we were able to offer families the opportunity to do one of three things, basically. Stay in, or come in full in person, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Stay in the hybrid cohort that you're in, so some students coming in, you know, Monday and Tuesday, or Thursday and Friday still. Or, you know, remain completely remote. So, you know, today was the first day. I was at Massey in the morning, kind of got a, it was just, then I was in Jackie Hollow in the afternoon. It was just really nice to see, you know, more kids in the buildings, and, you know, it looked, you know, a little bit more like school. But I'll let Mike and Steve kind of talk about, you know, their experiences for the day. It seemed like, it seemed like the days went well. I was at Jackie Hollow for dismissal, we were worried a little bit about traffic because people love to get there very early, and they're getting it at Fun Hollow really early, so the parking lot was crowded, but manageable. All right, I don't know, one of you guys want to go first?
Sure, I could start. So when we were here about a month ago, the original plan was we were looking at, you know, the early dismissal also with lunches on the way out. With our responses from the surveys and conversations with staff, we, it became really clear we wanted to try to have a full day at Jackie Hollow and be able to provide lunch. Many of the reasons were, you know, we were afraid that when the kids would leave and go home, would they really be able to, would they get online and do that last class? Would they be as engaged? We were looking at those students who are sometimes are more vulnerable students who are coming, who are coming in four days a week, and then in effect, they were losing instructional time, and how are we going to be able to service them as well in that model? So we sort of went back, and since our major concern was looking at the lunch, looking at cafeteria and lunch, what could we do with that space to make it more viable? So what we did was, we took out tables, and we replaced them with desks in there, and then we took some of the, we took a bunch of the plastic barriers that we were using at the elementary school, and we permanently attached, not permanently, they're taped on. We attached the plastic barriers to each one of those desks, so now we're able to manage lunch in this, in a safe way, where the kids are all facing the same way, they're six feet apart from each other, this, side to side, and there's a barrier in the front and on the side of them for each lunch wave. We're continuing to use the library also. We've, you know, they all have to use their personal desk shields when they're in the classroom, and we had a great first day. I won't lie and tell you that I wasn't nervous, that it was the first day of school again, but it was amazing. The energy in the school was incredible. The kids were thrilled to be there and were incre, and so agreeable to anything that we, you know, needed them to do in order to stay in school. So overall, you know, average, you know, for the middle school, we have 75% of our kids on campus. So if we look at like our hybrid at 50 and go in 100, we're sort of halfway through that right now, which is fantastic. So teachers are really happy. We had a really, we had some, we had a faculty meeting after school today to get some feedback about things, and it seems to have worked out really well. In that dismissal, we got everybody out of the parking lot by 2:57, which was better than some days that we had when we were in hybrid, so that was really good, so.
Great, thank you.
I think Mike hit it on the head when he said it felt like another first day of school. I think that accurately depicts what it was like for Massey today. I think it was a good day. The intent was really to get more kids into the schools, and clearly, you know, this, this has done it. Today, you know, we had probably 20% more kids in attendance than have been attending, so we were around 465, I think, around. There was 465, which is up 160 from what we were last week. So we have, our fully remote cohort has increased a little bit, but our four-day-a-week is currently more than what we were seeing in school last week. So there's a lot of families that want to see their kids in school every day. Many who want five days, not just four, but the remote, I think, is good for everybody's peace of mind. And we have about, you know, between Cohort A and Cohort B, we probably have about 150 to 160 that like the cohort, wanted to stay in the cohort. So I think it's kind of giving everybody what they're ready for, but also I think today showed that we can have more kids in the building. Part of the problem with lunch at Massey is we don't have a lunch period. It used to be a full period for kids, and when you put it in the middle of one of the periods, it makes that, and you have to have four lunch waves to have proper spacing, it makes that one period extremely long. So one of the complaints was, well, why is my, you know, son or daughter getting out at 12:44? Well, instructional time has only been cut by four minutes a period because the bulk of the rest of that time is transition times and lunch. You know, so when you take that out of there, we're really not losing much instructional time. So the time the kids are here, you know, they're in the classrooms, they're learning, and then they go home. The lunch, the distribution of lunch was interesting today because we had about 160 kids that won't be back till next Monday, and then we have, you know, we had about 300 kids that will be back on Thursday. So distributing lunches and breakfast to those kids on the way out was interesting, but went well. So again, all in all, I think it was a good day. The energy in the building, as Mike alluded to, was, was different, and I think it was different in a good way. The number of kids in classrooms is, is more manageable, more, more of a true hybrid, half and a half type experience, so. But it was good. I appreciate the flexibility that Joe and Jack and you as the board have given us to allow, you know, Jackie Hollow and STEM to implement one model and the high school to implement what it feels is best. I think it's, I think it'll work for the time being, so.
Nick? So Steve, what, what proportion of your students are in on the 4D? Because Mike said there's 75% on campus, so what proportion do you have in the building?
So in the building, we're at about just under 50% of the total student population. But in terms of who said they were coming in, we're up to 84%, which is a huge improvement, so it's up 20% from the 65% that, you know, last week could have come in, but didn't. Now we're at about 84% of those. So we're also clearing up for teachers, the cohort that a student is claiming to be, whether it be A, B, or C, or D, they're actually adhering to that cohort, which is huge for teachers in their planning. So it's, it's about clearing up that part of it too, as well as getting more kids in the building.
Another question I had for both of you really was, due to the shift in the schedules between both schools, I know there are a couple classes that STEM students take at Massey. How are, are those students, how's that working?
Yeah, we're working out the shared staff. The unfortunate piece of it is there was a STEM Strings class. It was a very short STEM's String class that I think got lost because of the overlap of the shared staff. Just because of the change in time for Massey's schedule and the change in times of STEM.
And there's also a math class, right?
Yeah, those students are still attending.
Those are fine. The math and the French were not an issue. There was a little bit of music overlap because that was really, that was part of the lunch issue because they would be eating, the Massey kids would eat their lunch while the other kids were still finishing up. But Julie's been working with Lisa Holman and the middle school kids, so some of them are going into like, there's like a shared seventh and eighth grade Strings class now, and so they're not losing their instruction as far as.
The math and the world languages were not impacted at all. It was really just some of the music.
And how is the, you said you had a faculty meeting today?
Yep.
How is the, you know, we, not here in Monroe, but just, you know, across the state, when you watch the local news at night, you hear, and they interview, you know, teacher after teacher. You know, I'm scared to go to work. We're increasing the capacity, but, you know, thankfully, the rate is coming down in Connecticut, but it's not zero. I mean, it's down from where it was, so what is the morale? What are people feeling? What did you kind of hear that you could share in your faculty meeting today?
You know, a major thing that happened, you know, when we even started talking about this three weeks ago, four weeks ago, was what do you need? Like, we had a shared document to say, what do you need to make yourself feel as safe as possible? That you want to feel, you know, secure in your job. And they would put things up, like what they needed for furniture, what other PPE they needed, and we were able to hit every single one of those things for them. And the custodial staff has been unbelievable at both schools because we share custodial staffs, and, you know, making more barriers for them, providing, you know, an unlimited amount of wipes and PPE and such like that. They felt, you know, and I think part of the thing was the cafeteria, they came in, my lunch monitors today came into the cafeteria and saw that and was like, wow, this is great. You know what I mean? Like, those kids are more, you know, I don't want to say isolated, but they're more, they're protected from them in a way that they've never been so before. And I think they, when they saw it in fruition, they were like, this is, this is working. So, you know, we didn't have a huge, you know, I'm not going to, they said, we have to keep reminding the kids, social distance when you're in your hallway, social distance in the hallways and such. But I think the reality of it was they were feeling pretty safe with the way it was. So that's, you know, and I ask them to be honest with me about things, and, you know, and usually they are. So I think they're feeling pretty good about it.
I think the biggest thing for the high school teachers was the, first of all, the response rate from parents. We had a very high response rate to the survey. And then we're following up with those who didn't respond, even today. You know, we still had some parents that, again, the assumption was, if you didn't respond, you were going to stay in the same cohort. Well, if they didn't attend today, but could have, you know, I reached out to all those families today. But I think when teachers were able to look at, you know, Lisa Shishkin is awesome, by the way, whatever you're paying her, pay her more. She really, you know, I worked with her to, you know, she added a new field to Power School. We uploaded, you know, the future cohort, the cohort that parents were kind of committed to. And teachers could look at their rosters based on what parents were saying the kids would do. So when you, it's one thing to talk about adding more kids to the school. It's another for teachers to be able to go into their classes and see what the impact for them personally in their classroom will be before it actually happens. So teachers were able to go in and say, okay, based on what we have, here is kind of what you would see on an A day, where Cohort A and Cohort C would be in your room. And then kind of the same thing that Mike did. Okay, so based on those numbers, do you need more PPE? Do you need a different space, et cetera? What do you need to feel comfortable? And then, of course, today is where the rubber met the road. You know, and again, I didn't have a faculty meeting today, but I reached out to them and said, hey, listen, how did it go? Did you have more kids than you anticipated? Is there anything else you need? Again, it's just, you know, attending to their needs is just the same way they're attending to the students' needs. But I think seeing how it would impact them personally by looking at their rosters in terms of what should be happening now that we've gone to this, you know, transition, helped greatly because they saw, like today, at 465, we had over 500 kids in the school in September. So it's actually, we have more in now, but it's still less than what we had in September.
Yeah, I think that's, that's really encouraging to hear. And I think, you know, as we've been talking about COVID and getting more kids back in the, in the school system, I think all of us at some point have, have said something about, you know, the comfortability of the teachers and of the staff.
I think they all want the shots. I mean, but we don't have control.
Yeah, and that's the other thing. I mean, you know, I, I was helping my parents sign up the other day because they, I guess I just gave away their ages, but they don't watch, so. But they fell into that next category, and it was like, you know, for someone who considers themselves somewhat tech savvy, I had two screens going. I had, you know, clicked things twice at the same time.
It's not intuitive.
No, and they got appointments for March 10th for their first shot. So that's, that's this, that, this level. Now, the next level of 1B, to the best of my knowledge, I don't believe that teachers have been kind of taken out. It's teachers, grocery clerks, there's this whole list in that next phase. And so are we talking about April, or are we talking about, who knows? But I think as long as, you know, this is really encouraging to hear about the morale, what people think, getting everybody what they need. I know we have the funds to do that from the different grants that have been coming in to cover exactly these things, so I guess congratulations on your sixth first day of school. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And it's weird how, you know, every state does it different. Like, my sister-in-law, who is a principal in New York City, well, she's already got both shots already. And my mother, who, who will never watch in New York City, who is over 75, hasn't been brought up yet. It's just, it's just amazing how that is different.
I just, as a parent in the district, I just want to say thank you to both of you gentlemen too because the communication has been phenomenal. I get the emails, and Joe, no one could complain about not having any information because they have the schedules, the bell schedules, you name it, about the lunches and pickup. So keep up the good work. I like your this days and histories, although I get nervous when I remember some of them. But the, but the communication has been very good from these two gentlemen, so thank you.
I can't thank them enough. Them and their teams have done just a tremendous job.
Great. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just would like to echo what Dave said. You know, I asked my son when he got home today, he's like, how was, you know, how was school? And I remember he said, this is the best day of the year so far. So, you know, to get a little bit back to normal, you know, from the student perspective is, I think, a huge deal. And thank you guys for making it happen.
Yeah, and we're playing basketball again, so.
I know.
Yeah, it's great.
I know, when Christopher got off the bus, I was like, how was it? He's like, it was so good to see my friends. And like, even all the parents I talked to tonight at basketball, they all echoed the same thing. So thank you for all the work, because it makes a huge difference.
There's kids that haven't been in school together since last March.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
And I was like, yeah.
Yeah, they haven't seen each other, and it's, the morale, it is just, you know, with everybody. So thanks to you guys and the coaches and staff and everybody for making it happen.
All right, anybody else? Thank you. All right. Special Ed, Darlene, you are up.
Hi, everybody. So this is actually my report for February 1st or 2nd, whatever that was. Meeting was supposed to be the, the one that got snowed out. And then I will be back in two weeks to do my, my February total. So this is based on, if you look at page 36 in your packet, this is based on January 29th, the numbers from January 29th. So I always start with enrollment. In January, we have, we had five new students register with IEPs. Four students were withdrawn, dismissed, or moved. There were eight students who were referred and eligible for specialized services, so, which brings us to a total of 462 students as of January 29th. That continues to grow. We are getting phone calls every day from schools that new students are registering. And if you look at the, the statement for the accounts, it's exactly the same as what I reported in the first week of January. So there are some program changes when I'm, that are in the works right now. So when I come back in March, those should be finalized, and so you will hear about those. But right now, we look, we look to be good. We have, you know, all of our accounts seem to be pretty stable right now.
So Darlene, is the five new students new to Monroe, these are people who moved here?
Correct.
Moved in?
Yeah, right.
And are we still seeing people moving in?
Yes, all the time. Yes, yeah. I don't know where they're moving to, Jeff, but, but yes, they are coming, so. Every, every day we get phone calls, you know, that new students are moving in and that they have an IEP. We have to put them into the system, so.
Anybody have questions for Darlene?
So I'm just assuming there'll be more referred students, given the time of year it is?
Yes, we actually, we were having this discussion before the break that, you know, the number of students that now have, we put into the system because they were referred either by the parent or the school team has increased this month. And, yeah, just we, that's typical of this time.
Anybody have anything else? Thank you.
So Nick, to your point, that is a budget risk, right?
Yeah, well, I, so you could stay, probably.
Okay.
Just kind of jumping into the next part C, I guess. I had asked a couple of questions of Ron about the fund activity statement, and there were a couple sped lines that we talked about briefly in the Finance Committee and that, I guess the bottom line is there definitely is risk. And if you look at some of the available budget, the fund activity statement, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong. The fund activity statement has encumbered what we know today, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So the available budget and some of the sped lines that match Darlene's sheet are, are low for if the sped enrollment continues to rise, I mean, if it rises a lot over the next couple months, which I think there's a distinct possibility, it could, that there is, you know, possibility for overruns in those accounts. However, there is that $500,000 account on the town side from the surplus from last year that was specifically designated to sped. So I think some of the lines in the fund activity statement should be, maybe not red flags, but yellow at least.
Yeah, I think that there are, there are lines in the activity statement that show a balance that may, may seem low, but we still have some money in some, in some of those accounts in the holds funds. But then there are other accounts where we are depleting the holds fund, and those are, you know, those will, you know, possibly be at risk. So we are keeping our eyes on those, and we will inform you when they become a risk.
And so just to refresh my memory, when we passed out our budget for special ed, did, did we ever have that conversation with, I don't know if it was with the Board of Finance, that we were going to have? Because historically, we budgeted to the students we have today, and then we all kind of agreed that we're seeing overruns year after year because the enrollment's going up. So the budget that is going to the Board of Finance has just the budget for
The students that we know.
Students that we know of. And then at the Board of Finance level, there's going to be a discussion about what to do with possible increases in enrollment and sped for the upcoming budget year, right?
Correct.
Okay.
What we should do, you know, and again, the budget will go to the Board of Finance in about five, six weeks, so we should probably take a look at the sped census at that point.
Okay, because I think that that $500,000 that's in that sped reserve fund is something that, that's non-lapsing, right, Ron?
Correct.
So there's, probably is going to have to be a balance in there every year to cover possible overruns. I think it is a good practice to, for us to budget what we know because then you're just budgeting out of thin air, and that's not, that's not prudent. But then if you have this backfill that has a balance in it that can cover you, and we get to this point in the year and we see what's happening, we can do better calculations based on, on what comes in. Okay.
Agreed. All right, thanks Darlene, okay. Um, before we get into fund activity, I know Joe and I had this conversation last week, um, or was it the week before? Just so everybody knows, just between September and the end of January, we had forty-two new kids move into our school system. Between Janu, I mean, between September and the end of January, we're up forty-two. That doesn't count the eighty-six that moved in over the summer.
So we're probably really at like the twenty, twenty-seven, you know, big thing.
Net numbers.
Oh, 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 got it, got it, got it.
Those are net numbers. So just so that everybody is aware that that's a net number, um, and if kids are still coming, you know, that, that's a significant increase in one year and I don't know when the last time we've seen that. And we could be far have exceeded at this point where we thought we were, didn't we say in like December, we were like around what we should have been in twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yes, yes.
Are we still there or we've exceeded that even?
Uh, I think we're still right around there right now. We have kindergarten orienta, uh, kindergarten information night.
And Thursday.
Thursday night.
How are those numbers?
Um, they're starting to creep up now. Yeah, they're starting to, the SS just called me, I think she's got seventy-four registered already, she's got eighty-something in kindergarten this year. So, yeah, that's before
Before Thursday.
The information night, so.
And some people don't register until kindergarten registration night.
Exactly. And then, you know, inevitably get some over the summer, so.
So I think we just need to be
Well, we gotta see where we, uh, where we land, I sure hope so.
Right.
Yeah.
But I just bring that up because that is some significant numbers, up a hundred and thirty-something year over year and forty-two just between September and the end of January. And I mean, if people are still moving in, that could be significant and that's net numbers. Those are not, you know, that's not, you know, gross, that's the net of what we've gained.
Plus the parents who held kids back this year because of COVID.
Yeah.
Right, and that's, and that's what, you know, and that's what we need to look at. Because, you know, the other thing that we have to keep in mind is, as Jack has done this survey, you also had a number of people, that, that is, you know, that is net of the people who withdrew their children to homeschool or go elsewhere, who have already said to us in being contacted, our intent is for those children to come back next year.
Yeah, are they gonna come back in kindergarten, are they gonna come back in first grade if they're kindergarten?
Right. So we need to continue monitoring that between now and, um, this, the spring.
Yeah.
When we get to the Board of Finance, um, with the budget because we could be, you know, know, we're gonna know a lot more information between now and then. And we may need to have discussions about class sizes and the need, need to have additional staff members.
Yeah.
All right, so we're in the fund balance already, Ron.
All right, so, um, before I get in, take any questions, let me just run through, um, a couple of the object codes. So object code seven, five, one, six hundred, COVID personnel, that's obviously showing a negative balance because nothing was budgeted last year. Um, we'll, we'll look to see if we can apply any, uh, any of the new grant funds, um, to that. Um, seven, five, two, six hundred, unemployment compensation, I've discussed that, we, uh, we trended higher than we budgeted and that was just the result of, again, COVID also. Medical and dental, seven, five, two, eight hundred and seven, five, two, eight oh five. We, we did change the way those are presenting in the fund statement for this month. We, um, changed the encumbrance to reflect the net impact of the employee contributions. So it's not showing over budget that it had shown in the past, so I just wanted to point that out. Page two of the fund statement, um, seven, five, five, six hundred, tuition magnet is showing that it's going over budget and that is the direct impact of the Fairchild Wheeler settlement. There was nothing budgeted for this year, so we'll have to close that gap.
So what Ron's talking about there is that includes the initial payment that we had to make, plus there's nothing budgeted for this year's students that were there. That was not part of the settlement, that's
Correct.
That's happened this year.
Seven, five, five, six thirty, I've discussed that in the past, that's tuition private, that's just, um, the grant revenue gets netted against that, but we just, we have not received that yet. Um, and seven, five, six, one hundred, supplies other, there's, uh, COVID supplies in there, which is wanting to, we'll look to, uh, cover that with some of our funds. That's it with the, uh, with the budget. If anyone, uh, has any specific questions?
Yeah, uh, did we apply the one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that we had already to design?
Yeah, we, we pulled that money out of the budget already, yes.
Jeff, did you have a question?
Uh, separate from a part of this, just curious, um, how we're trending for snow removal money, things out, we've had a lot of snow, we're anticipating more snow?
Um, I'll have a better answer, uh, two weeks from now, when that payroll hits. I can, I can tell you on the town side, we're, we're still under budget, we're, we're trending, we are, you know, starting to hit the upper levels of the budget problem. And I'm sure, I'm sure on the board side, you know, the, the snow removal budget on the board side is in this, heavily, the DPW budget, but I'm sure it's starting to get a little distressed there. But the majority on the, uh, a lot of the materials on the, uh, on the board side, they actually pull from the DPW, so, so we don't hit, we don't see that impact the board budget directly, but we'll see it in overtime, so.
When do we pay our, um, workers' comp insurance? Cause that hasn't, doesn't look like it's been hit yet.
That's just the, uh, allocation from the town, so that's been getting paid, it just hasn't been allocated over.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have other questions on the fund statement? All right. Joe, you are still up, oh, next is budget.
Budget transfers, yeah.
Yeah, so that's
So there's, uh, two transfers which you'll be asked to vote on, uh, later in the meeting, two small transfers. The first is allocating funds within the same object code, uh, fifteen thousand dollars from negotiation reserve to, uh, legal expense. And legal is, um, starting to, um, hit the upper end, you know, it's, I think there's about four thousand dollars left in legal, so transferring the fifteen, it will give us a little, little room there. Um, and the other is just, uh, there was a, uh, generator, an emergency generator repair, so we're just transferring funds to the generator repair line, um, from the emergency repair line, fifteen hundred dollars. Those are the two budget transfers. If anyone has any specific questions, that was it.
All right, thank you. Joe, you are still up at item E.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to, uh, just wanted to make sure everyone saw the, uh, the CAG's virtual day on the hill, um, they'll highlight some of the bills that are coming up, um, you know, find out what kind of pending, uh, legislation is out there, how that it can impact the school district and, uh, any potential mandates that might be, uh, under consideration right now. Um, I think right in your agenda, you can, you can register, uh, right, wait there, if you want to do it. I know we've, uh, folks have attended that in the past. Board professional development, you know, I was thinking about this the other day, um, you know, we've been in emergency mode for the past eleven months now, um, you know, and we've kind of put, I don't know if you call it board professional development, but just presentations, things that, just to keep, you know, everyone abreast of things that are going on, um, you know, because we've been focused so heavily on, you know, COVID, contact tracing, testing, vaccines, learning models, all that, all that stuff. You know, it's nice, I think we're starting to see a, a light at the end of the tunnel, um, and, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna be on the other side of this, you know, hopefully sooner rather than later. Uh, and I just wanted to put out there to you folks, if you wanna shoot me an email, um, I can send you some possible topics of some things that we might wanna, um, you know, start looking at so we can, you know, start thinking again about, you know, our mission of, you know, I, I know, again, it's been so easy to get sidetracked by COVID this past year. Um, you know, there's a lot of things on the horizon. I know we've talked a little bit about Vision of the Graduate, these guys are doing tremendous work with that still, um, you know, um, you know, SRBI, uh, intervention for students, we can look at that, freedom of information, um, you know, uh, different curriculum implementation and design and evaluation, whatnot. I'll, I'll send out a list of things, but if you have some things that you're, you think might be good for the, um, you know, good for the whole group, you know, please, uh, you know, don't hesitate to send those to me. It would be nice to, you know, I think what we used to do, you know, going back a few years was, you know, every other meeting, have, you know, a five or ten minute piece on, on something just to, to stay abreast, Teachers College, any of that stuff. And I think it's worth revisiting some of the things that we've done, too, just so we're, you know, we stay, uh, you know, you all stay up into, you know, what's going on and making sure that we're, uh, addressing our core mission of, you know, teaching and learning. So, um, again, just something for you to think about.
Yep.
And I'll, I'll send you some ideas that I have and then you guys can send me some ideas that you have and then we'll put it up there and see, you know, what, what we like and what we don't.
All right.
Uh, the S R two grant, so the state has received about four hundred and ninety-two million dollars from the federal government, um, from the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, the, uh, S R funds. This is the S R two funds. The S R one funds was the CARES Act, the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So the state, uh, of the four hundred and ninety-two million dollars that the state got, they've allocated it out to different districts. The way I understand it right now, uh, and Donna and I were having a conversation today because there's a, I don't know if there's a discrepancy, uh, but I need to get some clarity, but the way I understand it, the, the information I got from the state was that Monroe was allocated five hundred and twelve thousand dollars, um, you know, for this grant. Um, you know, the spirit of the grant is to address learning loss caused by the pandemic. It's really not to supplant for operational expenses, it's, uh, you know, to address, you know, needs that are out there for kids, whether it's social, emotional, whether it's academic, a combination of, of the two. Funds are available through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, so, um, you know, available through the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and actually slightly into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I don't know why they cut it off at September thirtieth. The state has identified four areas of priority that they want you to address in the, with the, with the grant funds. Um, the first one is academic supports, learning loss, learning acceleration and recovery. Uh, the second one is family and community connections. The third one is school safety and the social, emotional well-being of students and staff. And the fourth one is, um, uh, enhancing remote learning, staff development and the digital divide. Um, you know, we're waiting on more information from the state, but, um, the applications are expected to require a few things. One is a needs assessment. So what kind of testing, you know, how has the district identified the educational gaps created by the pandemic? So number one, you know, we're, what's the need that, uh, that you need to meet? And then what are your steps to, um, to mitigate that, those learning gaps? And then, you know, description of the programming and the resources that you have to implement over the summer and into the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So, um, again, I think the expectation is that we're gonna get more, uh, updates from the state and, uh, about how to do this. And then they're also gonna want follow-up from us, um, to see what, what districts are doing with the, with the money, what programs are developing, uh, are you developing programs that are really positive that you can share with other, with other districts? So, you know, that's what we know right now. I know Donna and I were looking at the, um, the, uh, educational cost sharing money that had, appears to be, appears to be flat funded for, um, for the next two years, which was actually a good thing, uh, coming in a little bit more than, than we expected. But there's a, a piece in there called the
Educate, financial, no, federal education pandemic aid.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if that's intertwined with this or not. It was very, uh, very murky. So I hadn't heard of that before, but I'm gonna try to get some, uh, info on that. Jeff?
Joe, explain to us your understanding of how the state came up with the individual contributions to the town for the E S S E R two grant. Meaning, clarify the article in the Connecticut Post that we got some of the lowest money in the state. That's kind of what the article in the Connecticut Post alluded to. Monroe got the smallest amount of money.
Yeah, and it's based on your, uh, the way I understand it, it's based on your Title One populations. So very similar to Title One.
And can I just get clarification? So they allocated this money, it's not like they send you a check
No.
With the money.
No.
There is an application, so you send an application and say, I plan to use two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that money for X, Y
You have to identify what are the needs, so we're gonna start, you know, um, you know, I, I don't want us to run out and start over-testing our kids, but we already do some assessments throughout the course of the year. We don't have to, you know, we could use some of the S PAC results that, excuse me, the kids will take this year, uh, our students take the STAR, um, assessments, at the high school, they take the PSATs, um, you know, we can identify needs through those things. We have to identify needs and then application and then, uh, programming to address that learning loss.
Right, and then they approve it and once they approve it, do we have to actually give them receipts and stuff before we get the reimbursement or they just give you the reimbursement?
Ron or Sheila, I know Sheila has a lot of experience with the grants, I would assume.
They keep all the backup.
We'd have to keep, yeah.
They're not, you know, they're not asking for the backup when we apply for reimbursement, but, you know, like we work, you know.
Right, cause I just wanted also to clarify, because some people here and read an article and it said Monroe got five hundred and twelve thousand dollars, well, they really think that a check for five hundred and twelve thousand dollars have arrived in the district that's sitting here to use. The state is holding that money and we're asking for reimbursement from the state, we don't have that money.
Right.
And we get reimbursed in stages, too. So as we spend the X amount and we appeal to get that money reimbursed, we don't even see the full five hundred or one cent.
Right.
And the, the, uh, September thirtieth is, um, the federal government's fiscal year is ten, one to nine thirty.
Uh, that's why.
And so if, if Connecticut has to send to them what the money is, what, like, like we send to Connecticut, if they have to send something up to the federal government, then it's on the federal government's fiscal year.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions on that for Joe? All right, you have anything else, Joe?
I guess I can go right into old business.
Yeah, we can.
Cause I, uh, I think I have the next two also. I just want to give everyone a, a budget update. The first lecman presented his budget, uh, last Monday night to town council. That budget included a one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar reduction to our Board of Education adopted budget. Um, we had, uh, the first lecman and I had been having conversations, um, you know, from the time our budget was adopted until he had to present his, uh, budget to town council. I am confident these are, this is a, a reduction that we can absorb, um, because there's been some new information that we've gotten just in those two weeks. And the one thing I've learned about this whole process is it's a, it's a marathon, it's not a sprint. And there's, things have happened between our, our budget and his budget and things are gonna happen. We're gonna get, uh, more firm numbers on insurance before it goes to town council, as well as some other things. So, um, you know, a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar, uh, reduction for us, um, you know, looking at some of the things that we, that have happened since we adopted our budget, one of the things that we've done is we've had the, the Fairchild Wheeler settlement. So that settlement said that we would give ten thousand dollars upon signing the settlement, it was a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. We would give ten thousand upfront and then we would pay three equal installments of forty-eight thousand five hundred, one on July one, one on, uh, of twenty twenty-one, so that's actually next fiscal year, one on January one, twenty twenty-two, which is also next fiscal year, and then one on Ju, uh, July one of twenty twenty-three, which is the, uh, I'm sorry, uh, twenty twenty-two, which is the following fiscal year, the third fiscal year. So, uh, those, those three equal installments were forty-eight thousand five hundred each. So between the ten thousand that we paid for this year, the forty-eight five for the next, uh, for that third year, we're able to, um, you know, we should be able to take that out of the budget. Again, these are all things we can adjust at, you know, once, um, you know, once we've gone through referendum and have a successful budget. So, you know, that was a, that was obviously a big piece of, of that. Um, there was an insurance allocation, um, this is a simple allocation to the town, um, so it's really, it's not necessarily a savings to the whole budget, it is a, it is a, a reduction on the Board of Ed side to lower our budget a little bit, but to the tune of about twenty-nine thousand dollars. Another, uh, forty-one thousand dollars in contingency items, we had talked about the COVID supplies, um, removal of that. Another $41,000 in contingency items. We had talked about the COVID supplies, removal of that with the, you know, expectation of, you know, the Board of Finance being able to backstop us again if we run into problems with, you know, where we're still living in COVID, you know, not budgeting as much for, for those things. And then there was a really small adjustment in the pension payment for about $4,000. So if you added that up, it's about $132,000. So that's, that's where we are right now. It brings our budget from the 6.19% that I presented to the 5.85% that was adopted to 5.62 at this point. And like I said, this is a, it's a marathon. We'll continue to look for efficiencies as we move forward. And once these are all finalized, you know, we'll approve it when the budget's ultimately adopted. Any questions on that? Alan?
Joe, are you keeping the Board of Finance and the First Selectman up to date on our enrollment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been going to the, the Board of Finance meetings. I think there's one this Thursday as well.
Continue on to SEDEXO update.
You got it. Alan Dean couldn't be here tonight, but I did ask him just to send me something. So I'll just kind of read what Alan, Alan sent to me, just about how our financials are. He kind of saw January as a, as a turning point. He said it was the best performing month of the year, even with the late start to the serving of breakfast. I don't think he started doing the breakfast until around January 21st. Sales in January were 96,000, or I'm sorry, 93,000 versus 143,000 from the same period last year. About 65% of last year's sales for the month. Year to date, our sales are running 33% of last year's numbers, but that's up considerably. If you remember the beginning of the year, they were basically nothing. And don't forget all of December, we were out. So there was no sales. You know, there was zero in, in December. In fact, the NSLP schools were only $2,000 off of last January sales. MASEC is still lagging behind. It still sits at about 11% of sales versus last January. In terms of meal counts, with the addition of breakfast later in the month, meal counts were 28,885 versus 19,000 last January. So he expects that gap to widen in February to hopefully cut into the deficit. The January deficit was $7,200. The year-to-date deficit is $156,000. One of the things that I have to get some clarification on is, I, I remember when Alan was here last, he talked about a deficit of about 106. I think that was after November, which didn't include the December, which was kind of a horrific month for them because they had no sales. So I do want to get some, a little bit more information on that to see how we got to the, the 156 from the 106. He did say that he was hoping to start to see monthly surpluses starting in February and for the remainder of the year. You know, having more kids in the building will be helpful. We'll be sending less meals home because kids are going to be in school to eat them. So, you know, that should relieve a little bit of some of that burden that we were experiencing. He also talked about, if you remember, he set the cents per meal for, he set a fee rate for, based on the cents per meal, and he did 64 cents. You know, he thinks that might, might have been a little bit too high, and before they, they signed the amendment, he might, he might reduce that fee a little bit. And he hopes to have a year, a year-end projection for us by, by the end of February. So hopefully at the mid-March meeting, he could have that for us and be able to answer any, any questions.
Yeah, Joe, his reaction to the Facebook post about the expired fruit. You should have talked to him about it.
His reaction was complete. He said, there's no, I mean, what I wrote, when I wrote there, it's unacceptable. His words were, it's unacceptable. There's absolutely no excuse. He made no bones about the fact that, he goes, I'm not going to try to even begin to explain it.
Thank you.
Because there's, there's no good answer. And there, quite frankly, there isn't.
David?
Joe, if we could somehow track these instances, because if we do come down, I know I keep harping on it. I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote to pay a deficit for, for food quality or people missing lunches. And we've seen it coming into our own houses. So if we can somehow track these issues, so at the end of the year, we can say to them, well, you're saying you owe you this, but we had this problem, we had this problem, we had this problem to Jerry's point. And, and to be able to, you know, retract from that with solid evidence to, to dispute that. Because if it's a quality issue and people aren't buying it because the food is bad, or it's rotted or whatever, or they're not getting what they should be getting at home, I want to be able to dispute that, so.
Yeah, on the other end of that, Joe, too, the letter you sent to the parents is very well received. I mean, they understood from your letter exactly what you meant. There were no bones, you know, it was cut and dry. It's just, I do agree with you, David. And it's not Alan, listen, I, I've got a, a totally different mindset of Alan from the last meeting. I mean, I, I know the man is trying. I, I've worked in food and it, it stinks. There's no other way to say it. You know, you're buying it from a wholesale, you're trying to do the best you can. I can't throw it on Alan, but there should have been somebody in that supply chain line that saw that and yanked it out. Throw it away, did whatever it had to be done. But I'm sure it would be him.
Yeah.
They just need to pay closer attention to what they're packing and putting in.
And potential expiration dates. There were other comments about expired milk.
Yep.
And also the temperature of milk in the transition.
But how many of you have walked into your local supermarket? Guys, I, I've probably gotten thrown out of more Monroe supermarkets because that annoys me that I go to grab milk and it expires today. And I call their manager and all they do is growl at me. I mean, this is not, and I'm not making excuses for Alan. This is just a problem with that date. People just don't care. I care about it.
Yeah.
But it seems like the people selling the product don't care about it.
Oh, and you do. You need to dig sometimes to find the proper date, like, and all type of dairy food, you know, because they sort of put the sooner expiration to the front.
Yeah, but you're, I mean, in that instance, you're a private consumer.
Agreed, agreed. It's your choice. You can walk away. You're right.
In this instance, it's a, there's no.
What, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they just need to be like, because every time something, well, like came into the house, like I checked the expiration date. Sometimes the milk is half full, like the container. I don't know if they had a leak that goes in the garbage.
Agreed.
You know, they just, somebody needs to be checking and going, wow, maybe this shouldn't go home.
You know, Joe, that might be a good point, Donna, that you just brought up. And I, I hate to give Alan more, more work. And I know as an employer, he does, but you know, what kind of updated in-service is there for the, the employees that are, are, are packing? I mean, that's a great point. And I'm sure he has. I'm sure since this Facebook post, he came down to, but I, I want it to be more proactive than, than a scream after, if that makes any sense. I mean,
Right.
It's a good point, though.
But again, what you just said too, I agree with what you said before about, you know, SEDEXO is, they're, just like everybody else, is they're in an emergency situation. I mean, I had a very good conversation with Jack a couple of weeks ago about, Jack did a lot of great research on what we talked about at the last meeting about the food pantry and all those different things. And there are a lot of hurdles.
Oh, yeah.
That Jack explained in a very well-written, five paragraph email that is, that are difficult, that are difficult to overcome. But I still think that, and I don't know if you want to add this to your list, Joe, but I, I still think that SEDEXO should try to.
That was my point.
Accomplish something. It shouldn't have to be district by district. It can't just be us.
They're a conglomerate. They should be able to do something to.
And it doesn't have to be on a town-by-town basis. It could be on a regional basis. I mean, they're not just here. So, you know, I still, I still think that there's a, if you want to call it a moral obligation to.
No, I think that's a good.
If people want to opt out, get that food to somewhere else. But now the other side of me says, oh, I don't know if I'm going to send that food other places because the people who are supposed to be getting it aren't getting the right thing. So.
Alan, that came from Nick.
So it's, it's, it's a, it's a multi-variable, complex problem that has no easy solution. But I definitely think, as Donna said, there are, as, as Jerry said too, there has to be better ways.
Yeah, there's got to be.
To do it than what's happening right now.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Well, hopefully we will have an update at the next meeting.
Yep.
All right. We will move on to newer business. Up first is the approval of the budget transfers as presented. Do I have a motion to approve those? Thank you, David. Um, Jerry, or Nick, it doesn't matter which one we win. Any discussion on these? All right, hearing none. All in favor? Great. Thank you. Motion passes. Up next is item B, and we have two curriculum first reviews. Up first is going to be Kevin Welsh presenting the AP Statistics. And this is an update of the textbook, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. First, I want to just thank the board for allowing me the opportunity to present a new resource for our AP Statistics course at the high school. There we go. The team we put together with myself and Mark McKee, he's an AP Statistics teacher presently. He's been teaching the course for the last number of years. And then Nick DeCapore, Board Member, came and joined us, and I appreciate his input because I know he taught, he teaches stats at the college level. So he, he definitely works with resources like these. So I really wanted his input as we were looking at the present resource and getting an idea of what we think's best for the, the students in this class. We started the conversation earlier in the air with Mark McKee, just really talking about how the course is going, if there's any needs that he, he, he wanted for the class. And this discussion really was centered around updating the present AP Stats resource. Presently, we use Stats Modeling the World. The copyright's 2010. A lot of the data in the book is from the early 2000s, late, you know, 1990s, just for your perspective. My daughter is a senior on the course right now, born in 2002. So a lot of the data was, you know, went for, you know, she was born at one, two or three years old. And some of it's relevant and some of it was interesting, but other was just outdated. So we really were talking about, you know, having to find a resource with some updated data and, and problems within the, the textbook so the kids could see the relevance and have some more connection to it. Also, the College Board of the Last Couple Years revised our AP Stats Framework. And the third was, you know, in this time where we're doing a lot of online learning, the, the need for an online component has been more, you know, really, really something that we're really looking to find. And, you know, and the copyright 2010, there was no online component with the, the textbook. This was a survey actually I, I collected through the Fairfield County Math Council about, about 2018, 2019, and really getting an idea of what other districts in Fairfield County and other, you know, towns in Connecticut. This is just a sample of those who responded to the survey. Presently, the Stats Modeling the World is the textbook we use right now, is also used at Joe Barlow in Norwalk. The other resource we looked at is called The Practice of Statistics. It's popular among a lot of the schools here, for example, Grange, Wilton, Richfield, South Windsor, Weston, Shelton, Trumbull, Fairfield and Darien. So really, we, we narrowed down to these two resources we want to take a look at and see which ones were best for this course. In going through it, we decided, I have two copies here, I can pass around a few, we, we decided on the practice statistics. And the reason for that is really, we liked both resources. There wasn't one that was, you know, stood out a lot more than not the other, you know. And really, the one we presently use was a good resource. But, you know, what we liked about this one, obviously it's updated, data sets, applications, it has an online resource called Sapling. And we had a discussion about this too, because the other one had one that I know Nick was familiar with and liked a little bit better. But really looking at both of them, both of them served the need for what we're looking for in an online resource. The cost of this textbook should be $30 less per, per textbook, per student. So we definitely saw a cost savings right there. This was linked to the new AP Framework, and they put it right on the textbook itself. This was updated really, you know, at near the end of 2000, or 2020. And then the other part of it we had talked about is presently it's not a UConn E C course, but this textbook's on the list for the UConn E C courses. So if we wanted to then have it a UConn Statistics course in addition to an AP Statistics course, this textbook's an approved textbook for UConn, but Stats Modeling the, the World was not on the approved list.
E C G is early college experience.
Right.
So it's, gives kids dual enrollments in college, classic nice.
So we figured that, you know, that's the important part of it, because I don't want to be sitting in front of you in two years. We decided that we could go with the UConn Stats and ask for another resource because the, the other one's not on the approved list. This includes, you know, teachers additions, student resources, online homework, online notes. You could, you could select, you know, certain aspects of the textbook and drill down even farther into it. The cost itself is about, again, $190 per textbook. We're looking to get 60 of them for a total cost of about $11,388 plus some shipping. How it meets the needs of the mission, you know, looked at where in terms of the standards, is it challenging? Is it inquiry-based? And does it include a technology component? There are four skills covered throughout the resource, the statistical method, the method of, of collecting data, the analyzing of data, probability and the randomness of statistics, as well as, you know, simulation and, and coming up with statistical arguments based on the data collected. Is it challenging, relevant? Was it 2020 edition? If you look through the textbook, after each chapter, there's a practice AP Statistics test. You know, we looked at, we're, we like our, our present AP Stats scores. We would like them to be better. And, and, you know, really having the kids exposed to as many AP Stats practice questions as possible would help them be more familiar with the test in, in preparation for it when they take it. In terms of being inquiry-based, each chapter starts with a hands-on activity that introduces the content of the chapter, gives them to do, you know, some sort of project or activity that really just then springboards them into the, the discussion of the, of that unit. And in terms of the technology, I mentioned earlier that it has an online sapling resource, which it brings in online homework and a link to notes and hints, but it also throughout the book brings in T I graphing activities, which is the calculator of choice as of now for the, for the course. So it really brings in that part of the technology as well. So, you know, we were pleased with this selection. We liked the textbook. Mark McKee liked it. He felt that it was one that would be really helpful in the course, so we decided to go with this class, for this, this resource. Thank you.
Any questions? Kevin?
I just want to add a couple of things. I think that the online part of this resource is actually really important. And I think, I, I don't know if I said it in the meeting, or we were just kind of chatting before the meeting, a couple of meetings ago. But, you know, at Fairfield this semester, we were all told that the default should be e-textbooks and that you should only request a paper textbook if absolutely needed for your class. And I think post-COVID, like in, in post-secondary education, I think that's going to become more of the norm than the physical textbooks. And so getting students used to using some of the online resources in high school is really important, just to get them used to that format going forward. I also asked in our meeting about the enrollment of AP Stats kind of versus AP Calculus and that, you know, are, are we seeing lower enrollments in AP Calc than AP Stats? And we're not, which is great. And actually, the, the enrollment in AP Stats is growing and growing quite a bit over the last couple of years. And I think that that is due in part to, you know, juniors and seniors and I have to say even freshmen and sophomores. My, my niece, who's a freshman at Joe Barlow, the other day was talking to me about looking at schools. And I was like, wait, wait, enjoy, enjoy that one year. But I think there's a lot more kind of planning about what students kind of want to go into earlier in the high school experience. And if you look even, you know, 10 or 15 years ago, kind of the brass ring of high school math was calculus because that was, you know, a certain level of rigor and it was like very, it was, you know, kind of at the top of the pyramid. But I've at least personally been seeing this shift towards statistics. And if you look at, again, over the last 10 to 15 years, the, the proportion of majors that have been increasing the highest. So, you know, psychology is always going to probably be one of your top three majors at, at any school. Business schools are exploding. Nursing schools are exploding. You know, there are nursing schools that are having to, you know, turn away applications for the first time in a long time. And all these different disciplines that, um, business, nursing, psychology, the social sciences, even the humanities, you're, you're kind of better served by taking a class like this in, in high school compared to calculus. You know, if you're going into STEM, then of course that's going to be your best bet. But there's this really interesting conversation, at least I've seen personally, about kind of what is like at the apex of high school math. And I think that, you know, using this new resource, kind of aligning ourselves with other districts and having this larger conversation about high school math is really putting us in a great position relative to, you know, even some Derg A districts about getting our students who choose to go to higher education ready. And based on the enrollments of these classes, we're really pushing them in the right direction for some of the majors that are really exploding. So just to add a little, I didn't mean to do five minutes on high school math, but just to add a little bit more context. So just to add a little, I didn't mean to do five minutes on high school math, but just to add a little bit more context to it.
And just adds that, too, and we're, actually, this is new, and this is something Steve and I talked about. In the past, we would only open up AP Statistics to seniors. And what we're finding was a lot of the kids found BC Calc and AP Stats just too much to do their senior year. So we're actually, this year, we're opening it up to, um, sophomores and juniors coming out of the honors tracks. So I have, I have a handful of students coming out of honors algebra II who as sophomores will take honors pre-calc along with AP Statistics. Um, so this is going to increase their enrollment even more. I'd say at least four or five kids I know are ready who are interested in it. But I'm hoping that what that does is get some of those kids who don't need to wait till BC Calc to then take two pretty heavy-duty math courses, they could do it during their sophomore, junior year.
David.
Joe, maybe through the Superintendent's Association, or Kevin would know, but, um, as I was looking at Kevin's slide on the, one of the earlier ones about all the other towns that have this book, I'm thinking, I'm thinking buying power. And I know that would be kind of a tough thing because every school orders separately, but we're, you know, all these towns are in silos and we're ordering and Sheldon's ordering and, you know. Perhaps maybe, you know, the bulk of us or some pre-planning, hey, what are you doing? Hey, what are you doing? Because if we, we all bought books together, I'm sure it would be a better deal than every town buying individually. Just a thought for down the road that maybe you can talk to the superintendents about and get some coordinators or, or something going. We're all, we're all going after something.
Because one thing I know is a lot of schools, it's different editions, too. This is a sixth edition and anywhere between the fourth, fifth, and the sixth is brand new. So that's, I could, I could reach out and see if I know anyone else, other school districts are looking to.
Yeah, tough to get everybody on the same cycle, but once you're there, I think the buying power for, for everything that we do, all the, all the subjects, it might help. Just a thought.
Any other questions? All right.
Thanks, Karen.
John, you're up next.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Pleasure to speak about a proposed Health II class, uh, this evening. There you'll find, uh, our vertical team is comprised pretty much of the wellness department. Uh, if, if you come to Massacre High School over the last 20 years, you've been taught health by one of two people. Uh, one is Bob Pagel, who you see up there, has been the lone person to speak, uh, to teach health over the, the last decade or so, since, uh, the other teacher retired. Uh, and in that time, we've offered a quarter credit of health. And for the most part, the students would take that either the first semester or second semester of their freshman year. And then we, they probably, they wouldn't see the health teacher until they, you know, through the high school career. Um, as we'll talk about a little bit later, one of the main impetus for it, this is the state requirement for the class of 2023 to have, uh, one credit of health. The other three teachers, you know, two of the three, I, I'm happy to say, are teaching health this year. Uh, you know, one of the byproducts of the pandemic is we've gone to the, the block scheduling this year, which was allow us to, you know, as we're going to the one credit, uh, for health, to give two more teachers the opportunity to teach health. All four of those teachers are certified to teach health. So it wa- it was nice to get them involved in the process. And all four of them, especially with, are going to have to be able to teach health, uh, moving forward with the additional credit that is needed to graduate in the class of 2023, which is our current sophomores. Uh, there is a timeline, as you see. Uh, fall 2021 is, uh, when we have to start offering this for our 11th and 12th graders. Um, that's coming up quickly. We've had a little bit of delay over the last year with, uh, everything that has been going on. This has been a process, though. Um, I could tell you over the last two or three years, as we've been trying to figure out, we saw this coming obviously down the pike. And, you know, the main push behind of, of what we wanted to do was, was best for the kids. Uh, what's best for the kids and what can we provide to them? Uh, the constraints of our, the way we schedule over the years, up until this year, we've always pretty much been scheduled, you know, the PE department, PE Health, opposite of labs, um, and based upon our FTEs. Honestly, the block scheduling helps us an awful lot with respect to this in terms of how we could, uh, present the material. Uh, the rationale for Health II, as we said, beginning with this, this sophomore class, we need one credit, uh, of health to graduate. Uh, and to be honest with you, it's been a constant struggle, at least in my time over, in here, over the 15 to 20 years, for the last 15, uh, in this role. Uh, you know, with Bob and Nancy, uh, when they, when she taught it as well with Bob, you know, conflict with the breadth and/or depth of what we're going to teach in Health I in their freshman year. Because they only met two times a week. And sometimes with our schedule, we had a day off. Uh, you know, they would see him on a Monday and then want to see him again until the next Thursday. Or, uh, you know, if they have them during the winter, we get a couple of snow days. So it was constant about, do we, do we try to cover more stuff or try to cover more in-depth on a few things? And it, it, we constantly went back and forth with that. So, uh, as I said, this is, this is a big opportunity for us and something that we're really looking forward to, not only present additional topics, but more in-depth and more with respect to, we, we could teach the same topic two different ways with respect to the ninth grader and sometimes 10th grader if their schedule must make them take the, the Health I in their 10th grade year, and then the junior and/or possible senior, so.
So they met two times a week, it was only for one semester. That is it.
Yeah.
Kids took health for two, two days a week for one semester, then they, during the freshman year, then they're done. So you could have, you could have health, their first semester of freshman year, and that's it.
Yeah, and then they want to see, uh, this is Pagel, Coach Pagel again, until if they had, unless he coached them, uh, until graduation, so. Uh, the mission of the district, you know, with respect to, uh, our Health II class, it, it really is going to be driven by the social, emotional needs of, of our 11th and 12th graders. And, you know, we've had a lot of great discussions, not just with the last few months or the last couple of years, with our guidance department in terms of how we could put together, you know? A lot of the topics will be, uh, created or, or put in, in, in terms of, of what our kids need based upon our conversations with the guidance department, based upon their conversations with students, and based upon our conversations with the students in terms of, uh, what are the pressing needs? What is the subject, subject content, skill contents that we feel is important for them and was probably what they feel is important as well? Uh, the district's reviewed, uh, Easton, Reading, uh, Joe Barlow, and Brookfield. Brookfield, the, the more like us, I should say, uh, the Joe Barlow PE Health, uh, requirements, they, they, I believe they offer five credits. And that's not just with this, that's been historically what they, they've offered, a lot of different stuff. Uh, and, and most of their health is, has been and always been embedded in wellness classes throughout their, you know, ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grade year. Brookfield is, is more similar to us in respect to the topics and, and the goals and, uh, how many FTEs they have and the fact that they are going also to do with a, a, a health course, uh, in the second half of their high school career with their students. There's units of study, proposed scoping sequence, we're going to get right to work on this. But I mean, obviously, a lot of these things have been discussed over the last year and a half, too, as we, as we try to figure out what is, uh, best for our students and what they think they, uh... But, you know, the overall emphasis is going to be applied learning of skills and knowledge during their college years and beyond, and things that we teach on this health, is for the 11th and 12th graders. Cost, a lot of this information that we're going to use is not going to be textbook-driven. Uh, we have a textbook now that we use for health. Uh, we are going to continue to use that as, as sort of a foundation for the new teachers that are, are teaching health. But what we wanted to do is we wanted to get two online additions, um, and at the teacher's center with sexuality module, um, at a cost of around $375 on that. Uh, with respect to FTEs, there's no increase at this time, but it's something that's going to have to be reevaluated. Uh, evaluated, you know, every year, you know, year in, year out, especially as, as we discussed, you guys discussed earlier in, uh, you, at the meeting about increased population. So with our schedule, with the amount of courses we have, uh, with population growth, you know, pretty much every year. So, you know, once we get our schedules and they come out, uh, to our students, you know, next fall, we're going to be looking at, do we need it? Uh, so, uh, that's something that you may or may not hear about next, next spring, so we're at that point. And that's it.
Questions? I'm a couple. Are we revamping Health I or is this replacing Health I?
No, there's, Health I is going to stay as is. You know, that is a living, breathing, uh, curriculum map, as, as most are. But this, that's, this Health II is in addition to Health I.
So how, so what type of credit is this? Is this a half?
This is going to be a half credit. So Health I is now going to be half credit, and Health II is going to be half credit. And they're both going to be, they're going to be semester courses. They're going to meet five times a week. Which is, which is really exciting.
And we anticipate like Health I would be freshman year, those would be junior year?
Yeah, Health I, most, we would like to have the students take it their freshman year. Uh, if a student has to take it their, you know, their sophomore year, they, they most definitely could. Uh, and for Health II, we most likely want them to take it their junior year. But once again, if different scheduling needs of that student, uh, make it, make it a necessity for them to take it their senior, they most certainly can. So there's some flexibility there, especially with the block scheduling and the fact that it's a semester course. It gives us a lot of flexibility.
And, and just remind us, what is the requirement now for PE?
It is one credit, and it still is one credit. So those classes are also, you know, very exciting for our, our teachers. Is there also going to be five days a week based upon the block schedule, was something that we haven't been able to do? Uh, so we're very excited about both, both, both courses.
So theoretically, that would be, let's just call it, you know, one semester freshman year, one semester sophomore year.
It's our hope that all students by the end of their freshman year have a half credit of each down, and they probably could fulfill their PE requirement, uh, in their sophomore year. Uh, and that, and then just have the half credit remaining for, for their junior, seniors. But as I said, it's very exciting for our teachers to see these students, their juniors and senior year. Uh, because a lot of times that doesn't happen, PE Health, and this is affording us the opportunity to do so.
And it also opens up the ability for students then to take other classes, um, that they wouldn't normally have the opportunity to take in the current or in the model within eight-day period.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I have what we said, there are, uh, I mean, last year, we had the eight, eight-period day. It was really a seven-period day because lunch was a, was a whole period. It really wasn't a, never really fully transitioned to an eight-period day. The, the block offers us, you know, an eight-period day over two days.
Questions, David?
Um, the, the FTE increase, um, so the reason why we don't need it right now is because we only have one class of students in 2021, 2022 who need this, right? It's just the junior class, the incoming junior class, right?
At this time, looking at the scheduling with, you know, uh, we, we have thought over the last year, we're probably going to need another FTE. We could get it done with respect to the amount, because we have all four teachers are able to teach health. And we do have some others, you know, teachers that may be, that have the ability to teach health as well. But yeah, you're right, because now all of a sudden, we're going to get on that cycle where each, where every class is going to have to have one in one.
What I'm saying is, is that this, this FTE increase for the upcoming year makes sense. But the year after that, when you have two classes in the Health II, it's almost a, kind of a given.
Yeah, we're going to have to evaluate it.
That's a good, it's a good word.
It's called an unfunded mandate.
We're going to need another.
Yeah.
Very diplomatic of you, yeah.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Just so as a reminder, these were first reviews on both of these curriculum changes. We will have these on our agenda, um, for our first meeting, and margin for a second review, um, and a vote anticipated. Well, I think, and sorry, I just have to go back. Um, I don't think that there was anything else on our agenda unless anybody had anything. Jerry?
What should do it, John?
Wow, so many hands, David. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Great, thank you so much, everybody.